Call, take her please, call the roll, take the roll.
Alderman Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Police?
Here.
Alderman Lewatan?
Here.
Alderman Shaki?
Here.
Alderman Caddella?
Here.
Alderman Winger?
Here.
Alderman Coles?
Here.
Alderman Knight?
Here.
First item is an approval of the minutes of August fourteenth, two thousand and eight. Do I have a motion? So make a, make a motion to approve the minutes of August fourteenth, two thousand and eight. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Before I get into the next item, Alderman Wesley would like to make a statement.
Seven years ago today, we had a terrible thing that happened to the United States, the World Trade Center. What I'm asking is to have a moment of silence for those people who lost their life in the World's Trade Center and all through the country. Thank you.
Thank you, that was very appropriate. Next item is a report and recommendation, case number zero eight dash SU nine, special use permit for the Wooddale Library District at one forty North School Street? No, is it east or? There's no north or east or west or, okay, one forty School Street. We can't, can you speak up a little bit more?
It, to use the property located at one forty School Street for library purposes. The Board of Trustees is under contract to purchase the one forty School Street property, which is located immediately adjacent to the main library facility. What I'd like to do tonight, just briefly, is to present an overview of the application, the uses that the library wishes to put the property to, and to relate the ZBA's recommendations that we obtained on August eighteen, together with Fire District and City Building Department input, and also lay out for you how our application meets the special use standards. To start, I'll say that the library specifically wishes to use the property for relocation of the administrative offices from the main library facility to the one forty School Street property. One forty School Street is a residential, single-family property. It is zoned R-two, single-family residence district. To the north is Limited Manufacturing District, and to the south, east, and west of the property is R-two, single-family district. In order to utilize the property for public service purposes, which is what we seek to do, we need a special use permit, we need your approval. The library does have space needs. They, they need more space to utilize for public service within the main facility. So relocating the administrative offices to the one forty School Street property, which is in very good condition, would certainly help the library meet library patron needs, allow for more speeding, meeting space, allow for more computer use in the library, reduce the noise levels, there's all types of reasons why this is a desirable use for the property and why the library is seeking to acquire it for this purpose. There will be, if the use is approved, library employee training, special programming, book club meetings, and collection space utilization in the adjacent property at one forty School Street that will help alleviate the space needs of the library and allow for more private meeting space for the patrons. The property currently meets standards for R-two zoning. There are no, no issues for front yard, side, rear yard, lot coverage, parking. Everything would essentially remain the same. The library is not planning to make changes to the property. There would be minimal impact in that they would utilize the existing structure without placing any additions onto it. There would be a walking path from the main library facility to the property next door. The library employees, and there would be only a few of them that would work in the administrative offices on this property, would utilize the parking at the main library facility and utilize the walking path. There's not very much distance between the building and the structure on the one forty School Street property at all. There would be enhancements made to the property. And let me, let me address the zoning Board of Appeals' recommendations. They, they considered our application positively on August eighteen and suggested that we have the Fire Department review the property, update or review ADA standards, and make sure that the library district would have the ability to comply with building codes by utilizing this property. The Fire District and the Building Safety Department on August twenty eighth conducted a joint inspection. Yvonne Bergendorf is with me tonight. She is the Director of the Library District, and she was with the representatives from the Fire Department, excuse me, the Fire District and the Building Department during that inspection of the property. The Fire Department determined that it would allow occupancy of the first and second floors of the structure at one forty School Street for the administrative offices, office purposes, and that the basement should be used for storage only. The public functions for the library would be held on the first floor only of the building. Fire, Fire District recommendations and requests were to have the library districts install a fire alarm system throughout the entire structure. That is, will be NFPA compliant, National Fire Protection Association compliant. Install exit and emergency lighting. Install approved locking hardware on the exit doors as required by code. The city's Building Department added to those requirements that the occupancy must be limited to thirty persons, which is, which is fine. Ordinarily, there will just be a few employees aside from the, when the programming is not in place. The city also added that there would be a handrail and guardrail required to the basement stairs. There's an open section of the basement stairs that is lacking a handrail, and that will be installed in order to bring the, that portion of the improvement in compliance with code. Under ADA, handicap accessible ramp would be installed at the front entrance. The doorway is wide enough to accommodate and meet standards. The bathroom doorway will need to be widened, and there will need to be an accessible toilet area on the first level, which is, is dual, very dual, under the Illinois Accessibility Code. So I think in the ADA upgrades that we have reviewed, in fact, I know that they, they are minor in nature, and they can, can be complied with for use of that first floor of the structure for public meeting purposes and administrative offices. We thank the city for reviewing in advance with us this property and our proposed use and your offer to assist, the city's offer, Building Department's offer to help us comply with the code in every respect. Next, what I'd like to do is review the special use standards for you, and then open it up for, for questions. This application for special use would serve the public convenience and would not be detrimental to the public health, safety, comfort, and general welfare. I think primarily, what I have mentioned is that the library's space needs are such that the use of the library would be greatly enhanced by allowing the permit. The property is so close next door that it, it almost seemed to me when I looked at it this evening, it's almost meant to be, because it's so convenient and so accessible for the administrative staff to utilize. Secondly, the location and size of the property is suitable for the special use. The proposed use will not intensify the use as it exists today. In fact, it will remain virtually the same. The street access will remain the same from School Street. There is a driveway from School Street leading to the property just west of the entrance to the library. The use will be in harmony with adjacent and nearby residences, and will continue to allow for the orderly development of the R-two district. The special use, thirdly, the special use will not affect and will enhance the use and enjoyment of property in the vicinity. As to the main library, it will lend itself to allowing a more quiet environment where administrative offices can now be converted for public use. Computer rooms, for example, can now be in public space rather than open space, which makes it more quiet for the library patrons utilizing the reading areas, and more possible for those needing computer use to do that as well. The, I think I've covered it on that one. It will not affect, diminish, or impair evaluations in the neighborhood, which is surrounding R-two property. Fourth, the nature, location, and size of the building will not be changed and will not impede, hinder, or discourage the development and use of adjacent lands and buildings in this R-two district. And fifth, the parking areas will remain unchanged. There is a driveway that leads to the one forty School Street structure that will remain unchanged. And if there is a need for the administrative staff to park, they would park in that, on that driveway. So the use by the library would be very similar to the use as it exists today for residents. The parking lot that exists for the existing, for the main library building is going to, for the most part, be utilized for all purposes, patron and administrative staff, and that walking path that connects. So there will not be an increase in, in ingress egress on that driveway or number of cars, at least not that we can anticipate. Maybe, you know, one or two additional cars at a given time. The entrance and exit, as I said, will remain the same. No traffic hazards or congestion involved. And finally, the special use will conform to the regulations of the zoning district, except as modified by the zoning ordinance. We would anticipate that if we obtained City Council approval of our, our request for this permit, that the conditions that the Fire District has suggested and the city has recommended will be part of the ordinance, and we fully appreciate those requirements and will comply with them. Are there questions?
The zoning Board of Appeals has determined, based upon information presented at the public hearing on August eighteenth, that the petitioner met the requirements as listed in the special use standards review. These findings of fact were the basis for the recommendation for the approval of the petition. Therefore, I will make a motion that a special use permit to allow for the relocation of the library district's administrative offices from their main facility to the existing structure at one forty Street, one forty School Street. Subject property is adjacent to the existing library, which operates under the existing special use permit granted in nineteen seventy-nine. The new special use permit will allow the library to offer additional programs and collection space within its existing building without having to construct in addition. Do I have a second?
Second on the question.
On the question.
I'd like to add to that, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, that this approval is subject to the successful completion of meeting all ADA, NFPA, and other required building codes prior to occupancy under the structure's new use.
I agree, does the secondary agree?
Obviously, yes.
Second agree.
Okay, any other questions? Alderman Wesley had your hand up earlier.
Yeah, I have two questions. When did the Fire Department and the Building Department walk through that building?
August twenty eighth.
May I ask the question, why did the council not get a copy of that walkthrough in our packet?
The letter was drafted and sent out to the library district with all final thoughts and comments on September the eighth. It was after the packets were distributed.
Okay, the other question I have, is that going to be one PIN number or is that going to be two separate lots?
At present, it is two separate lots, two separate PIN numbers.
Is it going to be one joining together then, consolidated?
The closing has not taken place. The property is under contract. And if the Board of Library Trustees determines that would be desirable so that it would receive one tax bill, are you speaking of a tack, a combination of the two properties to become?
Yeah.
One? That is possible to do. We haven't discussed it yet.
Thank you.
Alderman Lewatan?
I have a concern about traffic. I, I attempted to query some of the neighbors about how they felt the traffic flow was, if they had any objections, and I was, I was able to reach Christine Marietta, who lives two doors down, who has three children. And she's concerned about the increased traffic that this is going to generate. The traffic is the problem, according to her. There are not enough posted signs to indicate it's a twenty, twenty mile an hour street. She feels that the, you know, park at the end of the street and the residential traffic, adding, adding the library traffic, all that will increase the danger to the children on the bicycles who use the street. And I got to ask you, last year, you tried to, you had a plan that was going to put a road through from school to, what's that street? On the, on the south side, Ferrera, Ferrera? You, you were trying to do purchase of land to create a road because you want exits to go to the south and to the, and to the north. What is your ultimate goal on traffic in this area?
At this point, there is no anticipated increase in traffic, and I can certainly understand the neighbor's concern. The anticipation may be on her part that we intend to improve the property at one forty School Street for additional parking purposes. Currently, that is not the intended, the intent at all. Future plans may lead to that happening, and in the event we would seek your approval to change the configuration of the parking on the property, we would come back to request an amendment to the special use for that. But at current time, it is my understanding that the parking or the ingress egress use of that driveway will be limited to the administrative staff, which will be very few in number on that property, who for the most part will be utilizing the existing main facility parking lot. So I, I would wish to assure that neighbor that for the immediate future and for the near term, the parking configuration will not change, and there will be, there is no plan at present to put an additional roadway or area added to the driveway at all.
Well, that's, that's, that's good to know that you're not planning that at this time. And I'm looking at your map, and I noticed that there are four contiguous properties to your land. Are you going to be coming back for, for, for variances on future lots that you may be going after?
Variances, I don't know. But there is a desire on the part of the library district to acquire additional land to meet their space needs in the future. And it's possible that they may actively seek to acquire additional properties in addition to the one forty School Street property. At current, there are no other properties under contract. But the library is interested in expanding its land area by acquiring additional adjacent property if possible.
So the answer is yes, you are going to acquire additional land adjacent to you?
Well, I, I think that's a desire, but I, it's not currently in the wor, you know, under contract, or there's not been any deal struck to do so.
Not right now, but you are looking.
Yes, the library district is interested to meet the, the community's needs.
And you?
Alderman Winger?
I just want to remind us that the discussion here today is whether we're going to give a special use to that property at one forty School Street. It's not whether there's going to be future acquisitions of property or even about the acquisition of that property. It's about granting a special use or not. Thank you.
Alderman Coles?
I don't care what anybody says, I don't know how you are, but libraries are one of the most important things in a community. Without a good library, the community doesn't run right. These kids need a good library. And you, you're talking about expansion? You don't know what's going to happen ten years from now. If the property comes in front of theirs, next to it, where you turn in, and I go to the library all the time, and you turn in over there to put the books in, there's property in front of that. If they, if that come up for sale, I think the library would definitely take that piece of property. So I mean, you're talking about something that may happen ten years from now. You may not even be here, you may.
Be gone.
I may be gone. But the library is a very important part of the community. I remember when the, when the post office was part of the library. Then it went over to by Salt Creek, where the doctor's office. And now, we, we put this library in, in nineteen seventy-nine. You weren't even here. I was here, and we voted on it, and it only won by two votes. And I remember that. And you're talking about something that might happen ten years from now. The library needs this. My wife goes to the library every day. She takes books out all the time. Every week, she's got books, she reads. And without the library, you might as well throw the community out the window. Thank you, I'm done.
Alderman Caddella?
Yeah, let me just say that, I mean, we got a pretty specific set of standards reviews to, to pick, you know, to, to use as basically our, our review for whether or not this meets standards. And it has nothing to do about whether the library needs it, it has nothing to do about the history of the library, and it has nothing to do about future acquisitions. So this is about this particular piece of property, and is it appropriate for use as a special use? So, once again, just want to remind everybody up here, that's what we're discussing tonight, and anything else is probably inappropriate.
Okay, I, I think some of this conversation might be better talked about at the Shape of Wooddale meeting on the thirtieth of this month at seven PM at the Wooddale Junior High. If anybody does have any questions and wants to ask questions from the library, that would be appropriate time.
We'd be pleased to answer your questions.
Pardon me?
If you need us to, we'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, would the, the minute take her please call the vote.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Lewatan?
No.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Caddella?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes, of course.
Alderman Knight?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item is a report and recommendation, and I thank you very much, by the way, I appreciate it.
Thank you. May I add that if anyone has questions, to please call Yvonne, the library director, and she'd be happy to answer them for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is a report and recommendation on petition for pre-annexation review of Burrus' property at five North zero six one Wooddale Road. Is somebody here, or do you, Mr.?
Mr. Burrus is here. Yeah, Mr. and Mrs. Burrus are here to answer any questions if you have. There's a memo in the package which explains the reason why they're here before you tonight.
I wrote that one five six was okay. Isn't that weird?
Do you have, Mr. Alderman Wesley?
Well, are you going to present, or?
I'm sorry?
Are they going to present, or could I ask the questions right off the bat? My question here is, I know you, you want to add addition to, to this house.
Yes.
Under the county code. Am I correct? But meanwhile, you want to annex into the city of Wooddale.
Correct.
Mike want to go up to the microphone if you're going to answer?
My question on that is, and I have dressed this concern before, not because you, but on the annex property end. My concern is that, again, we have no control on what they could build on that site. And I still feel that is not right, that they could build under the code and come into Wooddale later down the line with whatever they want. I just don't feel that that's comfortable. I want, what I want to see is that we want to have control of what they build. Because we don't know, there are lot coverage in county, and I don't have the county lot plan or how big these houses could be or anything like that. Ours could be different. Okay? I just don't think it's fair if we're going to annex these, and I'm not against annexing you in. Believe me, I'm more against that we do not have control over what they built.
And in that respect, if this petitioner were able to annex, they did indicate that they would be willing to annex. However, they are currently not contiguous with the city. As you recall, they are adjacent to the Klein subdivision that we, we were reviewing. That particular subdivision has not been annexed as of this date. So this particular property is not contiguous with the city of Wooddale. So pre-annexation is the only option to them at this point. However, they have, through the pre-annexation, they are agreeing to annex when it becomes possible, which will be when the Klein subdivision is completed. And, not completed, but when the Klein subdivision is annexed. And they will, we could put through the pre-annexation agreement that no, that subdivision of the property, I believe we can put in the pre-annexation agreement that no subdivision of the property would be allowed without city approval.
My question is, when is Klein going to annex that property, or when are they going to do that?
That I inquired with the city attorney on this several times in the past, since Mr. Burrus has inquired about this situation, and have been informed that all of their requests as to where it is going are in the hands of the attorney for Mr. Klein, and they keep on informing our attorneys, the city attorneys, that they will be responding to them shortly.
Alderman Coles, I think is next.
This article that you have here about your septic tank, septic field?
Yes, sir.
This is the, one of the real reasons why you want to pre-annex into the city of Wooddale.
Yes, the root of all evil, yes.
This is the home that's way back?
Yes, sir.
Way back?
Uh, no, there's actually a home that's behind us.
Oh, there's a home behind you?
Yes.
I thought it was.
You can notice there's a driveway.
I looked at it wrong then. There's a home that's further back on, this is the front house, the front one.
Correct.
The front one. And the reason that you want to pre-annex is because of the septic tank, and you can't enlarge it. And in order to get the, you, you, we have a pipe that's up there for, for surge, so you want to tap into that.
Yes, sir.
That's the reason they want to pre-annex. And I, I, I think we should go along with that, seeing that Klein did get his stuff lined up, but he hasn't annexed into the city yet. So, but the line, the line is there. So I, I suggest that we do it, and.
Alderman Caddella?
It's, it is a little bit vague what the exact problem is with regards to not being able to increase the, the septic field size. Obviously, it's a big lot. I mean, I don't have septic knowledge, so what are the, what are the actual constraints? Just so I understand better what you're up against here.
Basically, I think the entire front yard becomes a septic field. The kids are in the septic field all, all the time. Besides that, I'm kind of tired of buying water heaters and water softeners, and it's getting a little old.
Alderman Caddella?
Okay, and then one other comment. I mean, there's, there's, there's something that's troubling about this, and it has nothing to do with you or your property or your desire to annex or pre-annex. What's troubling is that several months ago, we approved annexation of the property next door, and we're still waiting for that petitioner to follow through with what we told him he could do. It puts you in a uniquely awkward position, and it puts us in a uniquely awkward position. And I'm kind of wondering, what, do we have anything on the books? Is there any ordinance? Is there any policy with a statute of limitations on how long a council decision is good for without it being acted on? If there is a statute of limitations, and let's say that that's twelve months, and Klein doesn't do it, their pre-annexation agreement really means nothing because it's, it's kind of off, it's, it's off the charts at that point. I mean, fortunately, these people would have access to the sewer and water, but we're in a position where we thought one thing and another thing is what happened. So where are we with that? What is, what's going on?
Again, I consulted with the city attorney on this matter just today to make sure there was, you know, there was no change in the status, and, and they have been, at least weekly, requesting. weekly, requesting information from the, from Mr. Klein's attorneys regarding the final subdividers and annexation agreements. And the attorney keeps responding back that, that the information is coming soon. The information is coming soon. The attorneys and I, the city attorney and I did discuss today, the statute of limitations or a timeline as to when a decision would need to be done. They're researching into it a little bit, a little bit further, but they do believe that six to 12 months is, is the general timeframe when it should be concluded with them.
Yeah, we've always been told that if somebody wants to do something, they have one year.
Correct.
That the permit is available to them, after that, they would have to start all over again. Is that on the books? Is that actually there or not?
They're, they're researching to confirm that that exact language is there. They also believe that to be the case.
When will we find out about that?
I will inquire with them again tomorrow, and, and see if we can have an answer for the council at the next meeting.
Next week?
Yes.
Good. Thank you, Alderman Winger.
So, I listened to Alderman Caddella, and I do agree that that could be a potential issue for, for the petitioners here tonight. So, I would ask, Mr. Clicker, can you go back to the attorney and see if we can come up with a safeguard for these petitioners, so they won't be affected if Klein doesn't come back within the timeframe?
We can look, as, as very similar, this is actually kind of a, a similar situation to the Jazz Cult property, which the council has recently agreed to enter into a pre-annexation agreement with. In that situation, Mr. Jazz Cult is already contiguous. It's just the need for water that isn't there at this point. Again, dependent on the Klein subdivision. In that case, they put a timeline in that if the, the water is not brought within a certain distance of Mr. Jazz Cult's property, which by a certain date, Mr. Jazz Cult would have to have the water main extended himself. However, I don't think that that would be applicable in this case, since, again, the property is not contiguous with the city of Wooddale. So, if the Klein subdivision were to, for some reason, not happen, this property could not be annexed. But again, as I stated, the petitioner is willing to annex once it becomes available.
So, so do, does the petitioner have an issue then within, so if Klein misses his statute of limitations, then, then does it mean that they can just not annex in at some point, and the pre-annexation sits out there indefinitely?
Yeah, the pre-annexation would, could be written or structured in, in a way that, that it's kind of open-ended, that if Klein were to annex, or if, if that were to not happen, or if other properties to the south, which we are also in discussions with property owners there for a, for a subdivision on that side, if that were to happen, they would be contiguous on the southern border of the property, you could annex at that point. You know, the pre-annexation agreement would not necessarily have to have a sunset to it.
Okay, so then potentially, that's the fix to this issue, that if you can work with the attorney to come up with the best way to, you know, script it, so, so they are covered if Klein doesn't annex.
So, in other words, that they would, they would be getting a bill for the sewer only?
Correct. There is no water at this point. There is a sewer line, city sewer line, which does run right in front of their property as of this date.
Okay, if you can close your ears for a minute, I want to ask another question. What happens if they don't pay their sewer bill?
That's a good question. There are sewer-only accounts that we have in the, in the city already. I know that with a water bill, it's very easy, you can go and remedy the situation by shutting off their water service.
Right.
Sewer service, it's a little more difficult to do that. I believe our remedies would be through the legal process, through essentially leaning the property. But I can verify that with our finance department.
By next week?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alderman Police?
Got a question along the same line. So, pre-annex, I've got no problem bringing them in to the city. I guess you can't annex them in because they're not contiguous, whatever the legal stuff is. What about real estate taxes, then? Right now, they don't pay city taxes.
It's county. Correct, it is county.
So, if we pre-annex, do they start paying real estate taxes right away?
No.
No. They're just going to tap into the sewer?
Correct.
Klein says, you know what, this project, I don't want to do it. He doesn't do anything, then what? We're, we're stuck.
Again, as we were discussing, the pre-annexation would still be in existence, they would still be tied into the sewer. Other, there are other possibilities out there right now. As I said, we are in early discussions with other developers on properties to the south of this, of the petitioner's property. If that were to annex in, again, they would be contiguous, they would be, then, water, city's water would be brought within us, in front of their property, and we would, per the pre-annexation agreement, require them to tie in and annex.
But as far as real estate taxes, nothing kicks in until they're fully annexed.
Correct.
Just wondering, does Klein own that other property you're talking about?
To the south of the, no, he doesn't.
Because the signs out front are exactly the same.
The, the, the property to the south of the petitioner is not owned by Mr. Klein.
Okay. Any other questions? Alderman Wesley?
One, one fellow. I understand your point here. And again, if Klein backs out of this deal, we still don't have control on how big of a house that they could build.
We don't.
Okay, because they, they still going to build under the county guide codes. Klein has to build under our code, because if, if, or else he doesn't get the annexation. We got control of that. I'm just saying, I don't know how big the house they're building. I, and I, and I voiced this opinion before. Pre-annexation, I do not agree with approving on this council. Perfect example, Klein. Guaranteed, he was going to annex in. With pre-annexation, he's still in here. Now, these poor people are here. And again, I was against the other one, because we had no control over the building permits, nothing over that. Let's start thinking of a city, guys, if we're going to take these people in, then let's look at that we have control on, follow our codes, building codes. Because it's only fair that county, I don't know how strict county codes are, I really don't.
We have Alderman Caddella, and then Alderman Coles.
Along the lines of what Mr., of what Alderman Wesley's talking about, I mean, is there, Ross, are you aware of any situation, any agreement we can enter with the county whereby we manage any permits?
I'm unaware of any situations like that. And that would be, you know, if the county were to ask us, could we administer a permit in your town, we would probably also tell them no. As far as our regulations, I mean, yeah, those property would be annexed in as R1, under the R1 regulations, they would be permitted to have 35% lot coverage. The petitioner is only proposing an addition to his house. As it is, the 35% lot coverage with the size of this property, they're not coming, they're not coming anywhere close to that 35% lot coverage at this time.
Alderman Coles.
All right. If it's annexed into the city anyway, we send out building inspectors anyway to make sure it's up to our code before it's, no, we don't. We did at, we did at the other one on Wooddale Road.
Jazz Cult, we inspected the wa, the sewer service itself.
The sewer service, that's all?
Correct, because that was tied.
All right, okay. All right.
Alderman Winger?
Thank you. Mr. Clicker, I heard you recap some of the differences or similarities between building under the county versus building under Wooddale. And are there any other, are there any differences that exist?
Not that I'm, major differences that I'm aware of, no. We were both following the International Building Code. We both follow the same building code practices. As far as setback density and that, the requirements are similar between the county and the city. The major differences that come in, in this particular case, would be the, the zoning requirements in there, that the county's zoning would be, would have, would quite possibly allow for a, for a greater subdivision of this property in the future than the city would. The pre-annexation agreement, in my opinion, would stop that, because the city has an agreement with this petitioner, that they will annex into the city, abide by our rules in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Caddella.
I think this is my last one. I've become cynical in my year and a half I've been sitting up here, and I don't mean that, that you folks would do this, but time changes everything. Were you to sell, were Klein to never annex, were you to never be annexed because of this, but under pre-annexation agreement with our sewer? The next owner comes in and realizes that under county zoning ordinance, they could probably split this into three lots. Does our pre-annexation agreement on this property specify that the sewer is being brought to one and only one primary structure?
We can definitely request that be put in.
We can request not only that, but no further subdivision of this property under this annexation, pre-annexation agreement while using our sewer. Is that also?
I believe that to be correct. I will check with, I will consult with.
And we can know that by next Thursday for final decision as well.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I think I'm done.
No other questions? Okay, then, I'll make a motion to, enter into a pre-annexation agreement with the city for his property located at 5 North 061 Wooddale Road, with the specification that he cannot split the lot? Is that what the, what you said, Alderman Caddella? You cannot subdivide? And we'll get, we'll find out from the attorney whether this is allowable before we make a final vote on this? Alderman Winger, you want to?
And then I'd also like to add that, that the attorney is going to look at how we keep this agreement, so it would go beyond the 12 months, or beyond that limitation. So, once there is a property adjacent, then there would automatically be an annexation.
I agree. Do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay. Question? Alderman Police?
We seem to have a lot of questions here. Most of them are probably legal. I mean, I have no problem bringing them in, and like Alderman Caddella, I've seen too many deals going on. When the petitioner, another petitioner was here, was saying, well, we're with the county, if you guys don't want to take us in, we can, you know, we can probably put a massage parlor or 12, you know, 20-unit condo there or something. Before we enter into any pre-annexation, if, if it doesn't say that this is a single-family home, I'm definitely going to be against it.
Can that be part of the?
We can specify that the, the pre-annexation allow hook up to one single-family residence. As far as subdivision of the property, further subdivision of the property, I will consult with the city attorney to make sure that that is applicable.
Will that satisfy? Okay, and Alderman Wesley?
One question. There is too many questions here that he has to find out for the city attorney. My recommendation, until we move forward and take a final vote on this, let's get the answers first. If this is coming back to the council, we don't have all the answers. Let's, but then they got to start back again with us through committee.
Are you making a motion to table, or what?
I'm making a motion to table at the council until we get the final say on all this. If we don't have a final say, then it goes back to committee. Because there's, there's like nine questions that he has to contact attorney on right now. There's a lot out here, guys.
Do we have a second on the motion to table?
Second.
Would you please call a roll, motion to table?
Till we get to the answers.
Till, till next week.
Till council?
Till full council.
Provided the attorney has all the answers. If not, it goes all the way back to committee table.
Agreeable? Well, let's take a vote.
Yes.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Lewatan?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Caddella?
No.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
No.
Alderman, can I?
Yes.
Motion carries. We'll be table till next week, and we hear from the lawyers.
Okay.
And I just, yeah, I mean, I know, I think.
Ma'am, if you're going to speak, you have to go up to the microphone.
Your concern is about the size of the house that we want to put on there, is that what it is?
No, they're concerned we're going to do something else.
That's what it is?
I believe.
Right?
My concern also is the size of that house. We don't know what the standard is in county versus our standards.
Okay.
You, you could, I have no big, I have no idea how big your house is going to be, okay? And I just want to say, if we annex in your property, we want some control on what size lot you're building and additions. That's the only thing I'm saying.
Gotcha. Okay, items to be considered for future meetings. Number one, the tree preservation ordinance. When are we getting to that one?
To be honest with you, I'm not familiar with the tree preservation ordinance itself. I believe that will be coming, perhaps Alderman Winger has something to add on that?
I was just going to add, too, that I was surprised to see it on planning zoning, because it was previously in public works, but whatever committee, I'm okay with. However, when I did motion to table, if it's the one specific to what we discussed back in August, late July, I had tabled it to September. So, we, we really need to get it done in September, or at least have the discussion again. And I'm okay, whatever committee it sits on is, you know, I'm okay with that. But we got to focus on September, so I don't know if we have it at the end of, if we have a fourth meeting, or if we include it in on next week, council meeting? Either way, okay. Thank you.
On the same committee?
It's been on the public works.
Yeah, it's been on public works. I think maybe it was just inadvertent.
Just put it on public works, if you would, please. And the second item is a, it hasn't gone through the zoning board yet, but the commercial and recreational vehicle parking storage sometime in October, probably, if they come back with us with some answers.
Right. We've been working on that with the zoning board. We're very close to a final ordinance, draft ordinance, and we'll be finalizing that at our October meeting.
Okay, and the last question I have is, when there will be another meeting with the building department manager, yourself, and Alderman Caddella, and myself, with the zoning consultant? It's been a long time since we've heard anything, Alderman Caddella.
One question about the tree preservation ordinance. I mean, there's, there's two on, either on the books, or hopefully soon to be on the books within the city, one on private land and, and one for the parkway trees. Parkway trees has always been public works, but private land has always been planning, zoning, and building. Does anybody know, I assume the tree preservation ordinance under planning, zoning, and building is with regards to our existing tree preservation ordinance on private property, and I assume that's why it's here? Does anybody in this room, can you validate my theory?
Alderman Winger?
I believe back before you were on council, Alderman Caddella, we had the discussion for the tree preservation ordinance on public works. Whether or not, and I'm not discussing whether or not that was appropriate, but it was previous practice. We had it under public works.
And I don't have any problem with it, so.
Okay.
So, can we get an update on when we will be having another meeting with the zoning?
I'll check with Mr. Noah tomorrow.
I'd appreciate that. And, oh, yeah, and you're going to also find out by next week if we do have a date limit on permits?
Yes, sir.
And so forth? Because I was always told by the building department that it was one year, and I'd like to confirm that if not, I'd like to make sure that that's part of our ordinances.
Right. For, for building permits, it definitely is a year to enact a permit. When it gets into land development, there's different timelines and regulations, and I'm going to get a firm answer for you by that for next week.
I'd appreciate it. Anything else for this, future items in this committee? No, if not, I make a motion to adjourn the planning, zoning, and building committee. Do I have a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Would the minute, like, will the minute taker like to take a break, or should we continue? It should be relatively quick. Okay. I'm going to call to order the Public Works Committee meeting of September 11, 2008. I declare a quorum. Item number three, approval of minutes of August 14, 2008. Item number three, approval of minutes of August 14, 2008. I make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is a report and recommendation award of 2008 sidewalk program. And I make that motion to recommend that a contract be awarded to G and M Cement Construction Incorporated in the amount of $31,547.30. Is there a second?
Second.
And the question? Alderman Shaki?
Just to make sure I understand, where are these sidewalks situated?
I, I also had the same question, and I confirmed, and to, to my favor as well, that these are the broken sidewalk situations where there's a, a change in elevation or crack. These are the, kind of like the sidewalk repair type.
Thank you.
And I'm not sure if there's anything else to add to that. Alderman Coles?
There was supposed to be a new sidewalk put in between Windsor and Potter in that street, Elmwood. There's supposed to be a sidewalk put in there this, this year?
If you're referring to the section of Elmwood where that abandoned pavement is?
Yes.
That's, that's being done under the roadway program, which is under contract now, and they'll probably do that.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Anything else on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item, item number five, is a report and recommendation revisions to stormwater ordinance. And I was able to take a look through this, and the stormwater committee has been working hard, working through all of the rules and regulations on the new best management practices and how to apply them to Wooddale, and even get a little more strict on, on residential properties. And everything looked good to me. The only points that I'd like for me and Mr. Graff talked, and on page three, I'm sorry, on page two, page four, item number one, section C, if we can fine-tune the dollar amounts in, in the copy that comes to council, and instead of having it per acre, have it broken down by square foot or, or something that we can adapt to the piece of property that they're either tearing down, or, or working on less than a half acre in size. And other than that, my only other comment before I open this up for discussion is also, it would be ideal, or my request, that we craft the ordinance where if a property needs to, if, if the property owner is looking at doing the in lieu payment, that they would actually request approval from stormwater and, and council. So then we would agree with them that yes, you can pay the money versus do the improvements. Because ultimately, I'd like to see the improvements be done versus the money, because it ultimately makes the neighborhood a better, better, more drainable place. And so I'm okay with either them going to stormwater for approval to pay the fee, or stormwater and council. I'm okay either way on that. And, and with that, before I open up for discussion and questions, Mr. Graff, did you want to add any overview on this before we start the discussion?
Sure. Let me give a brief overview. I've taken two, two separate items, and I combined them into one agenda item. The reason I did that is because they're so closely related, but I hope it's not too confusing for people. And I want, I want it to be clear, it's two separate things. One is the new county revisions, which involve the best management practices. The other is our Wooddale Stormwater Commission's recommendations on some items more stringent and some items more related to general stormwater management. And they were actually working on this before the county even started a lot of their work. So hopefully, that's kept all clear. The Stormwaters Commission's recommendations on the, on the last two pages, and I think the, the main area where they're more stringent is that the Stormwater Commission's recommendations really have no lower limit on when you would have to either do the best management practices or pay a fee in lieu of, whereas the counties have a one-acre limit for single-family and two-family residences. In terms of who would do fee in lieu of, for something like a teardown lot, it's extremely difficult to meet the best, best management practices. The, the main reason being, basic turf grass is not considered a best management practice. So if you were to treat all the runoff from your property, which is what we're talking about, getting pollutants out of the rainwater, you would have to plant something like a prairie grass around your property, which I expect most homeowners would not want to do. So if, if the Stormwater Commission recommendations are adopted, all of those smaller lots, or virtually all the smaller lots and teardown lots, would go for the fee in lieu of. As Alderman Winger mentioned, it's $3,000 per acre. I, I would imagine the typical teardown lot is probably something like a quarter acre. If it's a quarter acre, that would equate to $750. I don't think there's many, many parcels of a full acre being developed with just one home. So I, in, in a sense, in essence, if, if the Stormwater Commission's recommendations are adopted, any, any teardown lot would be paying that fee, basically.
Thank you. Anything on the question? I'll start from one end and move my way down. Alderman Wesley?
But correct me if I'm wrong, we still, regardless, if we have ordinance or a plan like this, we still have to obey by the Page County.
Correct. No matter what is adopted or not adopted here.
So the Page County stays.
The county rules are in place, and they're, they were adopt, they took effect August 4th.
So all we do then is amend, and, and more or less, what we're doing is we're making our own to tighten it up a little tighter. Am I correct here?
Correct. We were lowering the, the thresholds, again, from one acre to.
Right.
Any development, any residential development.
All right, but we still have to follow the county, regardless.
Correct.
That's why I'm standing. Alderman Police?
I've got a couple of questions. All right, we can, I can come back around then?
Only twice.
Okay. No problem. So let's say I buy an acre lot, and I want to build my house. Does that mean I'm going to, and there's a swale in the back, so it's really nice. So I could, what, I'm putting a wetland detention basin in the backyard? Or a swale with native vegetation? When we say native vegetation, are we talking about the junk that's on Potter and that, in that pond between Ash and 83? You know, that one that looks like it's a junk yard? Is that what we're going to?
I don't think that's, I think that's evasive, plant things, although I'm not any expert on wetlands.
Well, it's native vegetation.
I'm not sure that's native.
I remember being on stormwater, and I was, used to complain, why didn't we get that cleaned up? Well, at the time, Mr. Holmes was a director, and he was saying, well, that's native vegetation, non-evasive, evasive, whatever. So in other words, everybody's, people in the backyards, a little new, few teardowns are going to have, they're all going to look like their retention pond on Potter, is what we're telling me here, right?
Well, yeah.
Because they're all going to do this native vegetation.
Right. If they want to do onsite best management practices, but I think in most cases, they would pay the fee in lieu of, because the requirement from the county is to treat 100% of your property. So if you're, if you were to have a little wetland in your backyard, you have to find some way of draining your front yard back to it, which, you know, again, it's not practical in most cases.
Okay.
So in most cases, you would pay the $750 or whatever.
Then we go to the fees.
Correct.
So everybody will just start paying the $3,000 and, and forgetting about, now, do they still need the, every property has to maintain, hold so much water or whatnot, correct? Has to adhere to the stormwater regulations. When they pay the $3,000, do they no longer have to adhere to their regulations?
No. The detention requirements are a separate regulation.
It's separate.
And again, with the detention, the, the limit, under the county ordinance is three acres, under the Wooddale ordinance is two acres for residential, has to provide detention.